Okay, there's Murphy. There's Murph. Okay, great. Okay, hi Murphy. I think, I hear Suzie's coming in shortly, but I think we can call the meeting to order at 7:02 and we can start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Hello, Suzie, we're just getting started. The first order of business is public comment. And first person up is Jerry Phillips. So I guess you need to hold the mic. Is it on? I think you need to turn it on. Hold on one second, you've got some tech help coming. There you go, you're okay.
Good evening, my name is Jerry Phillips, I'm a parent in the district. And I just wanted to comment, make a comment about the last board meeting where it was mentioned that we had a significant rate of teacher loss. I think it was mentioned, something like, Mr. Saul said something like fifteen percent of the teaching force was, had resigned in the, in the calendar year and, or at least since July 1 and then it turned out that that was corrected in the Chronicle. And what I wanted to address was something that the superintendent said, that that was to be expected in a district like ours. And that, that really kind of caught my attention. Because although I, I think obviously we, we have a profile that is similar to other urban districts, I don't think that we should accept a statement like that, which suggests that, that teacher loss is just something that we should live with, that we should just expect that because of, because we're a certain kind of district. I think that our expectations shouldn't be so fatalistic, they shouldn't be centered on, on acceptance, we should be thinking about what we can do to reverse that. I mean, so for example, I mean, do we conduct exit interviews with teachers who are leaving? Because they're leaving for reasons that some, sometimes have to do with working in this district. We know that pay is an issue, that teachers in Wyndham are paid much lower than they are at the state average. So I think that that's one of the factors that we should be thinking about, we should, because we can't build a consistent, stable system if we have tremendous rates of turnover, that's obvious, right? Because the institution is the people who have an institutional memory, who understand the culture. So every year we're losing, you know, ten percent, fifteen percent, or whatever it is of the, the, the teaching force, that's, that's the recreation of the culture that we have to go through. And, and that is time that's wasted in the classroom, it's, obviously it's demoralizing to the people who do stay. So I actually see that as a, as a situation that is urgent. And I'm, I'm asking the board to, to take this up in a serious way and not to dismiss it by just saying, well, this is just what's to be expected in districts like ours, or New Haven, or Waterbreak, that, I find that an unacceptable way of looking at things. I think we, we want to be positive, we want, we want to commit to the idea that we'll do the best with what we, with what the resources that we have. We, we obviously can't pay what they pay in Greenwich, but we, what can we do to, to reverse that, rather than just accepting it? And so I, I would like to see a sense of urgency on this issue and not, not just to say, well, it's not as bad as it seems, because I think it is as bad as it seems. I think it is an issue. If, if, because it's an issue for the children who don't have the same teacher from year in, the year out. That's, that's why I think it's a serious concern. I'll just leave it there, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person up is Henry Crane. Are you looking for something, Henry? Oh, there aren't any on the front table? Okay.
So, my name is Henry Crane, and I live in Willimantic and have for many years. I came here because my parents moved here. I finished my childhood in a single-family home.
Henry, you want to hold the mic closer to your mouth because some people can't hear you?
Hi.
Please, thank you.
I finished my childhood in a single fam- do I have to restart this?
No.
Thank you.
It's okay.
Moving on, I finished my childhood in a single-family home and that's worth voting on everything and anything this town can produce for a vote. I think that regardless of my being a renter now, to salute my parents and the fact that I finished my childhood like I did in a single-family home is worth voting on everything. Everything that this town can dream up. If they vote no, that's more opportunity to vote yes or vote no right along with them, whatever I want to vote. But to participate, having a first-generation American like my mother as a immigrant from Province Quebec was also helpful in that thought. However, my neighbor's comment about losing a good percentage of his teachers every year has been a constant. And the Willie PD has famously come up with cars. If you lose the police officer, you don't lose the automobile. You may lose his pistol belt, his equipment, his training, everything about him or her when they move to another town with more money. You don't lose the car. There are things that you can do as a school system that you can talk to your superintendent and others that you already have on staff. You can find things that can improve those teachers' lives, maybe so they can want to stick around as well. Just because it's not a police cruiser doesn't mean there aren't things in your system that can make it interesting to stick around long enough to have an exit interview or a discussion, another discussion that might hang on to that teacher. That's the only thought I've got on that. You have a budget coming up, I know it's not on, on this sheet, oh yeah, it is, this budget referendum. You need to turn out your vote. A hundred and thirty-six people made the difference of whether or not you were going to have a school budget to spend. It might be useful to find out what those folks might have thought, but more importantly, you may not be able to attack those things. But on the thought that maybe you could, you might want to listen up and find out what those are. I don't know what they are, and that might be just one politician to another, I'm not a politician, but you might find out something that could be useful, much like that cop talk of finding out a police cruiser as opposed to a cruiser versus an SUV, the cop might be more comfortable and want to stick around. That was what they came up with. There's other things you can do that aren't always give them an extra five bucks in their salary. You don't lose the SUV when the cop moves to a different town. There's things you can do that are different that could help you. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed up for public comment unless somebody came in late and didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay. So we're on to reports, we're going to hear about the reading program, the textbook purchase for the calculus course, and a short update on the fiscal year 2018, 2019. So first, we're going to have an update and discussion of the American Reading Company materials piloted in 2018, 2019. I'm going to turn it over to the headless voice that's going to come over the speakers. Dr. Garcia is here with us remotely as she is out of state on vacation this week, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Garcia. Go ahead.
Hi, Dr., hi Mrs., hi Mrs., I, thank you, thank you very much. I, I think the report is, is, is very, is satisfactory, I would be in call if you have any question, but I would like to give the opportunity to Mrs. Goodwin and Mr. Evan Jones, Principal of Natchog, Principal of Wyndham Center, for them to give you a brief overview of the benefits that they see in the program, and then I will sit in line to answer any question regarding the report I submitted to the board.
Okay, so we're going to hear from two principals right now who've come to speak to the reading program. And make sure that your, the mic that you're using is on, I think, I think he left it on.
Hello?
Yes, there you go. You want to make sure you introduce yourself for the people who are, who are watching. Thank you.
I'm Kathleen Goodwin, I have the privilege of being the principal at Wyndham Center School.
And I'm Evan Jones, the principal of Natchog School. Thank you for having us.
Yes. First of all, yes, thank you for being here, I know it's summer and as volunteers for Wyndham, we appreciate you being here, I'm sure you guys have lots of things you would like to do on a summer evening besides sit at a table inside the library at Wyndham High School, but we do certainly appreciate you being here and giving us the opportunity to talk a little bit about what we did this year with the American Reading Company. We recognize that it's on your agenda as a point of discussion and also as an action item for recommendation to approve the purchase of the American Reading Company materials for grade four. And Evan and I have just a couple of short notes we collaborated on, and I'll let Evan speak first.
Sure, I thought a great place for us to start with this discussion would be to focus on the mission of Wyndham Schools. And it's, I know you've all seen the, the mission and read it many times, but I thought it would be a great place to kind of ground our work today together, especially thinking about key words like equity and deep student engagement, supporting cultural and linguistic diversity, so I'm just going to read it for you. Wyndham Public Schools provides all students equitable access to high-quality education and graduates students who are prepared to become productive members of society. The school district and community hold a commitment to support cultural and linguistic diversity, deep student engagement, and of course, the pursuit of lifelong learning. And these are all things that the American Reading Company, these are all ways that the American Reading Company supports us with high-quality materials to support a high-quality education. You all know, and I know that you've all seen a slideshow and, you know, heard a lot about this program, but there are a couple of sort of key points that we wanted to go over with you again.
And this list, of course, is not all-inclusive, and there may be some things that you have questions about that I hope we can answer if, if that comes up. First, first of all, you know, we've had the program already in Companeros the last couple of years, this year we were able to pilot it and support the implementation of, of, of the ARC program in the monolingual programs, as well as our new one-way dual programs that are happening in each of the elementary schools. With the program, they, as Evan said, and I'll repeat, it, it is a high-quality material that we're providing to our students, there are engaging books, a variety of books, it is not a basal series, it is very personal to the students, and it also is personal to the teachers because they can spend a lot of time on a digital platform called School Pace, where it allows them to conference with students specifically, give them specific information on a student based on data, now we are a very data-driven school, as most schools in Connecticut are, but our school is very data-driven, I know Dr. Garcia is often looking for information from us regarding student growth, and I know you are holding us accountable for that. And the digital platform certainly allows us to provide that information. Not only does it do it for the teacher, but it also does for the student. The student can have personalized goals that they can verbalize, targeted areas of growth for them in the area of reading, specifically decoding vocabulary, it could be sight words, lots of things.
And if I could just piggyback on that, the district focuses a lot on the gradual release model, and that's just what this program does, it releases responsibility back to students. If you go to any elementary classroom, you could ask a student, what's your power goal? What do you need to get to the next level in this reading program? And students would be able to tell you. Another amazing thing about this program is that there are eighteen levels, and we know that there is a lot of diversity in our district in terms of language ability and in terms of reading ability. The program that we were using previously had only three levels, on level, approaching, or not on level. So this is a great way for all kids, you know, for kids to be able to feel successful, to take ownership of their learning, and for teachers also to feel supported with their efforts to differentiate for students.
We talk about the third graders especially too, moving to fourth grade. One of the things when we talk about engagement, going back, back to what Evan said about student engagement and the idea that they are productive and prepared, is they are prepared in third grade right now, the teachers in the elementary schools prepared them to have the same materials in fourth grade. So if we are to put children first and to think about them, we have a whole district of third graders right now who are anticipating joining their fourth-grade peers and moving levels again. They, we, at the elementary schools had a cutoff date to stop students at a certain level, and when I say levels, there's like, there's buckets, and they're colored, and students know what they're working towards. So at the end of the school year, we said, you know what, you know, you're in two red, you'll be able to, you're going to stop right there, that doesn't mean you can't go higher, but we want you to work over the summer, we want you to continue reading, and when you come back, we're going to see how you're doing, and then you'll be able to go to the next level when you go into fourth grade. So it would be very disappointing, to say the least, of, from our students if they go to fourth grade next year and that program is not there and they return back to Journeys, a basal series that is, I believe, a copyright of 2012.
And I just want to say, we have to ask ourselves, what's the message that we're sending to kids is, as third graders, if they had this amazing resource and they're going into fourth grade, back to a 2012 basal reader, an anthology with one story a week, which may or may not be engaging to them, where the American Reading Company provides, you know, a whole library of books essentially that, and that's one thing I always tell parents when they have a reluctant reader in their house, you know, I'm saying, take them to the library because they're sure to find something that's exciting there at the library for them. And that's just what this, you know, this resource provides, a whole library of books, engaging, exciting, colorful books that get students excited to read and write. And that's another great thing about this program is that writing is built in, kids are working on research projects, using books, if you went to a classroom, you'd see kids, books open, citing the text, writing back to the text, all the things that we're trying to teach them to do. So it is a really amazing, you know, a really amazing resource, but don't just take our word for it. I hope that, you know, I know the S-BAC scores are still embargoed, but I hope that you've all had an opportunity to look at the third-grade S-BAC scores across the district. And if you haven't, I would ask you to go into executive session and take a look at those scores, and I think you would all be pleasantly surprised at what you see.
The third-grade scores were, were incredible this year. Both Evan and I are speaking to you about the ARC program because we recognize that our buildings are moving forward, and certainly ARC may be one of the variables that are pushing our kids because it is so personalized, because of how it embeds reading, it also embeds science and social studies, it tackles vocabulary, which is an area that our students, it's one of our challenges, especially for second language learners. The other thing is, if we don't have ARC in fourth grade, it will, still, there will be students in Companeros who have it, but we will not have it in our monolingual classrooms. And one of our goals in a building's as diverse as ours, I currently have a K-1-2 started next year, which will have one-way dual, and then I have K-5 monolingual, I have one teacher at each grade level, and some of the other buildings have variations of that, but I will have like two tracks of, of kids, you know, in different series. And that's not a great thing for a middle school when they look at kids coming in and kids coming from different programs will have different resources. So our goal, of course, is to unify the district and provide every student in every elementary school with the same wonderful resources that the ARC program has. The ARC program so far has been by far, and Michelle Dupree is here, you know, she's a, an esteemed reading coach in our district, but is by far one of the best embedded professional development that the teachers have received. We have got onsite coaching, they go into the classrooms, they support the teachers personally, they work with the students. And for me personally, I can't speak for Evan, but for me personally, that has been incredible because I can teach ARC, I'm not just evaluating a teacher when I come in, I can sit down at a table and I can say to a student, what's your power goal, if they don't know, sometimes they don't know, you know? But they, I can look at the materials and I can, I better understand what they're working on, and I can sit with them and I can actually teach using the ARC materials myself. So the PD that we receive from the American Reading Company has been exceptional.
And just one last thing to add, I mean, we could probably go on and on, but one last thing to add is it's creating an amazing consistency across the district. So it's not only, not only are there ARC experts in my building, there are ARC experts in Kathleen's building, and they have opportunities to collaborate too. So it's, there's a lot of creativity for teachers, a lot of excitement, we heard from community members talking about concerned about teachers leaving. This is a great way to support teachers with that SUV that you were talking about earlier that will stay with the district, if we can do that. So I think that's all we have, I've told my fourth-grade teachers that if it weren't so dramatic, I would get on my knees and beg for the ARC program.
Practice in the hallway.
Yeah, I practiced a little bit in the hallway, but I felt like that might be a little dramatic, so I, I won't do it.
Well, thank you very much, I think, would you please stay, stay with us a little bit longer in case there, I'm sure, that's what I'm just about to say, Jaime, in case board members have questions for you. And Jaime, I guess you're chomping at the bit.
I have two questions, maybe. If you go to quantitative, you know kindergarten fall 2018 and spring 2019, they have 1.9% and they went up to 47.6. What does it mean? What is the 1.9? How can it be a 1.9 of what?
Are you, which assessment are you speaking about?
I'm just looking at the table that you provided to us.
Well, it's, it's I-RADY. Dr. Garcia provided it.
What is the 1.9% and went up to forty-seven in one semester?
Yeah, she's, she's showing it to her now, let her take a look at it.
Okay.
I, I believe that would be grade level proficiency.
Level proficiency.
I can answer that, that's in the report that I gave them. When we look at I-RADY, I-RADY in the fall, in the fall of 2018, the kids that took the I-RADY test in kindergarten, that's what, those are the percentage that was on level. In the spring, when they took it, meaning in the spring, in May, June, we have 47.6 on, on level.
That would be kind of in, not the same quantitative data, or qual-, I'm not quite sure what, what term you use, qualitative or quantitative, I apologize. But the, the idea in Wyndham Center School, our students in, in tier one, just your, you know, your regular students who are in the regular curriculum was only seven percent, by the end of spring, we had forty-two percent. So I think that's kind of the same thing Dr. Garcia is looking at district data.
This is entire district, I think, Kathleen, this is district-wide, not only one grade level.
Right.
The purpose of that data was to show them that, that ARC not only impact S-BAC or also impact other assessment that we give in the district, other benchmark assessment that we give in the district.
Jaime, did you have another question?
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate now, but how does this program work? Do you get the books? Do you get the materials? Do they distribute the materials to every school? How, how does it work? Once you pay the money?
Sure.
You buy the program?
Sure, basically, so ARC sends, they have a lot of real human support, so you get boxes and bins of books, they're all leveled, and they, Michelle Dupree at Natchog organizes the boxes and bins.
Right, there was, this is Lynn talking, um, there, some of, some of the board members may not have been at the board meeting we had a couple of months ago where the presentation was given and the books were shown to us, maybe, maybe you missed that, but I think one of the questions that people have is about the supports, the professional development, all those other pieces of the program other than the actual tangible items, right? And you started talking about it, the support that, that...
Right, I think what, it, there's twofold, so there's the support that ARC in itself gives, they come, they check the boxes, they leave them. People like Michelle are in charge of ensuring that they are, you know, they have little stickers on them that they're put together, and that they're then deployed to the classrooms to, you know, for the teachers to use. After that, then there's the, the coaching that ARC in itself provides to the experts like Michelle, you know, at Natchog, and the other coaches at the buildings to support the teachers. They provide the, that kind of direct support to the teachers, and also within the ARC, within School Pace platform, there are curriculum resources and other things that the teachers can go back into, bless you. So the PD is, is ongoing, it's not like I can say, what do they provide, well, every month, every six weeks or so, or whatever time we have them scheduled, they provide different things. And it's based on grade level need, it's based on teacher need, it might be based on the coaches' need, it might be qualitative data that we're looking for as principals. In my building, my instructional consultant last year, on every Friday would print out, you know, a document that told me how many times a teacher was conferencing with students to ensure that all students were being conferenced with at a certain, you know, at a certain time, how many students had moved at certain levels within the School Pace. The ARC coaches that came to us showed us where that information was, and then our building-level coaches and instructional consultants then went in and took that information and personalized it to the, to the, to the buildings.
And there were even actually ARC coaches.
Well, let, Dr. Garcia, just, could you...
If I may add one more thing?
Okay.
If I may add one more support, it's also a support that it provides to the leaders of the building, they also work in training the leaders to look at the best practices in the classroom, and then all the leaders, we meet together, and we visit at school, and we look at what we see, how we can do it better, so there's also support for the leaders in the building, also. So the support that ARC provides goes from classroom teacher to coaches to leaders, everyone is supporting this program, everyone is learning and everyone is growing with this program.
Mr. Jones, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was even surprised that, you know, ARC provided coaches to help with the unboxing of the materials when they first came, to help our literacy coaches at the building unbox and prepare the, you know, prepare the, the kits for each classroom, you know, going over, you know, that with them, step one, all the way to, you know, of course, instruction and, and working with leaders also.
Thank you, are there other questions? Yes, Mary?
So I think I understood that you said the coaches, some of them are already on staff, or they are a teacher leader or something, but we did hear that we're losing coaches in this next fiscal year, so that's a concern I have. And also with regard to, to the professional development, which I have seen is a very considerable part of the bill that ARC sends to the district, I haven't seen our specific one yet, but what is the kind of, what, do they come in person and present to the whole cohort of teachers?
Could you say that out loud rather than just nodding your head so people can...
So, yes, and I'm sure Evan can, you know, qualify anything, but the, the coach, there is a person who comes directly to the building and works, they're scheduled, usually the Office of Teaching and Learning would schedule that with them, with the coaches, and then we, they would come to the building directly. You know, I echo your concern regarding the, you know, unfortunately, the reduction of coaches, you know, as a principal, I'm not a hundred percent in love with that, I recognize that we're, you know, in a time where, you know, we don't have a budget and things need to be looked at, but certainly, you know, I talked about my instructional consultant, I talk about, you know, Michelle as a coach, I have, you know, an academic coach coming, we'll have one person next year to be doing all of that, and hopefully, the, the training that we received this year from ARC will help with, with continuing, you know, with training the teachers in fourth and fifth grade. But it will be a heavy load with the reduction of coaches to, to continue this.
Yeah, Natchog had an amazing ARC coach, and she was with us all year, her name was Linda Aguilar, and she was a bilingual coach, so she could go into our bilingual classrooms, she could go into our unilingual classrooms, she was observing, modeling, coaching, meeting with grade-level teams, working with teachers, how to use the platform of School Pace, you know, modeling conferencing. know, modeling conferencing with students, making sure that I was there.
How frequently was that?
They come monthly, I want to say. Yeah. I want to say, yeah, they come every month. So it's, it's really amazing. They become a part of your team, you know? And I think because you have the same person all year, that they're really invested in your school's success also.
They came 10 times? They came every month?
Ten times to every school.
10 times to every school. I apologize, I don't remember that. But we did have a lot of coaches, so I'm trying to, I didn't want to say something inaccurate because we also had math and CK3LI, so.
Are there any other questions that board members have while we have the principals here with us? Well, I want to thank you for taking the time to come in on this summer evening. And it's an action item later on on the agenda, but we really appreciate you augmenting what the teachers presented to us so nicely a few months ago. And thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for listening.
Now, we're going to hear about the request for the purchase of textbooks for the new calculus course at Wyndham High School. And Dr. Garcia, are you presenting on that, or is somebody else?
Well, this, this is very simple information. As you know, we are increasing the number of EC courses that we offer through with East Con, oh, East Con, with UConn. And this is a course that is the new course to, to the district. And that's the reading was developed based on interest. And I think Dr. Yumber is there. This was developed based on the interest of students, the desire of students, and because of the implication on how important is this course once they're in college. So this course came from the desire of the students and the desire of the university and the importance of having this course as they look at obtaining more college grades. So we recommended this course to the board as one that is aligned to the mission also of the district.
And as...
It's a new course.
There was information in your packet about this. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Mark?
Is this proposal for just an additional four textbooks? Is that what I'm reading here? There are currently 16 students enrolled. We intend to purchase an additional four books.
Twenty instead of 16, I think it means.
I think it means that we need to purchase 20 books.
In case four more students take the class.
Right. There's 16 enrolled now, but we need to purchase a few more books in case we have new students who come in. Sorry, that wasn't clear, Mark.
Usually, at the beginning of the year, students may change schedules sometime, and we may have some students that enter this course. So we wanted to have a little bit more books in case new students enter the course.
And, and can you remind us, Dr. Garcia, what the cost for this would be?
It's 199 per book.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, are there any more questions on this point? No? Okay. Thank you. Now, we're on to a quick update on, from finance. Murphy?
So there was a meeting last Thursday between Dr. Garcia, Rita Pajcik, our Associate Finance Director, the Town Manager, and the Town's Finance Person. And they're still working to close the books because the Finance Department's combined department. It makes sense to try and work out closing the books for both the Town and the Board of Ed together. And they're not quite finished with that process, but we should have details and numbers at an Audit and Finance meeting either next Wednesday or the following Wednesday.
And we'll definitely get a report at our August 14th meeting. Are there any questions on that from the board? There's another meeting happening with the same staff that...
Yes, on Thursday.
This coming Thursday. So we should know a little bit more each step of the way. And so we will have a Finance and Audit Committee soon. Yes, Mark?
I certainly don't have a, I don't have a concern with cooperating with the Town as to getting the books closed. But I am concerned if we give too much authority or power, if you will, to the Town Manager to be involved in our budget and how it's done, and too much exposure with the Finance Director under the circumstances. So I want, I want to be sure that we're clearly in control of our side of the budget and we're cooperating with not following the Town.
Very good use of words. Thank you very much. I think...
I took my ARC reading program.
I will say, as the Chair of the Board, I concur with that sentiment, that just because these meetings are happening does not mean that we are ceding decisions about our Board of Ed budget to anybody else but, but us ultimately.
I think that's been made clear.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. So we're on to discussion items. At the last board meeting, I made the suggestion that, given the fact that we have a budget referendum coming up on September 24th, and the fact that there will probably be lots of questions swirling around based on the report that comes out as a result of the forensic analysis, that it might be a good idea for us to do what we did back the first year that Dr. Garcia started here. What year was that again, Dr. Garcia? I can't remember off the top of my head.
2013.
2014? I think it was 14. Yeah, the summer of 2014. She came on during the summer. The budget had already failed a couple of times, I believe. And there was a September referendum planned. And Tracy Lambert was the Chair of the Board of Ed at that point in time, and I was the Chair of the Board of Finance. And we worked together to hold a community forum where people could come and hear about the budget, what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, you know, so that they could clearly get an understanding of what the budget was. And also, we had time for people to have a community discussion and answer questions. And I'm not saying that that's what caused the budget to be able to be passed, but I do feel that it is, it did pass after that. I remember it was just a few weeks after Dr. Garcia started as Superintendent. I suggested at the last meeting, and it was sort of prompted by public comment made by Jerry Phillips, actually, about engaging the public more, I thought it might be a good idea to think of doing, about doing something like that again. It would mean that we would have to commit as a board to being there and being available to the public. And we'd have to do work ahead of time to make sure that the presentation that is given really will make sense and be, you know, easy for the public to understand and easy for them to ask us some questions and air, air some concerns that they may have. Recognizing that we can go to the Board of Finance and ask them at their August meeting not to cut our budget anymore, or, or whatever, but ultimately, right now, it is in the Board of Finance's hand to hand, I mean, hand to hand us the dollar amount that will be on the ballot. So my question to you all is, do you think that's a good idea to try to pursue something like this? I would be happy to talk to the Board of Finance and see if they would co-host that with us, or we could do it on our own. I just want to open it up to discussion. And, and are there other ideas that you think would be helpful? I know that Dr. Garcia has been pretty diligent in the past about going out to the community and talking about the budget in various settings. I don't think this would replace that. This would be in addition to that. So any, any thoughts?
I think that's a great idea. We should definitely do that. We should co-host it since they, especially since the dollar amounts come from them. So it should definitely...
You mean, the dollar amounts come from the Board of Finance?
From the Board of Finance. So it should be co-hosted by them, but if not, then we should just do it by ourselves. And like Mr. Phillips has said in the past, we, we do need to let everyone know exactly what, what's at stake, because people just don't know. They just assume, "I'm going to vote no, and my taxes won't go up," which is not, not at all the truth. And people are afraid their taxes are going to go up, so they just vote no, period. They don't know what's at stake, what, what we're, what we possibly could lose. Especially, like, they, they talked about, the principals discussed here earlier about the ARC program, that the valuable people that, the coaches are so valuable, we can't lose them. You know, our reading program is very important, just things like that. Our district needs it.
Any other thoughts? Thank you, Ilda. Any other thoughts, suggestions, input? Murphy?
It's widely believed, I think, that the subject of the forensic analysis had an impact on the vote in May. And therefore, once that's become public, having a community discussion where I would expect that a lot of the questions that we'll get...
Are related to.
Are related to what's in that report and how, you know, that matters in terms of what we're doing in the operating budget. So we can cover both the operating budget and the report at a community meeting. I think it would be very worthwhile in terms of people's comfort in voting for the budget.
Any other thoughts?
That would show our transparency.
And, yeah. Any other thoughts, or anybody think that's not a good idea? Okay, well, I'm going to take that as...
Consensus.
Tasset approval that we can move forward with figuring out how to design something. And it will most likely be after Labor Day, because I think, you know, I would like to have it when, you know, people are back in town, particularly people who have children in the school system, want to make sure that we can, we can have it in a way that as many people as possible who are going to be affected by this decision can be present.
Maybe the week before the referendum.
Well, I think we might need to have it sooner in September, when, so that while people are still thinking about all this. So, so we'll work on it, okay?
Okay.
Any other thoughts on how to get word out to the public? Okay, well, I encourage you to, to get in touch and let me know if you have any thoughts, okay? And I can certainly work with central office staff and particularly Ms. Chady about how we can roll these things out. We have a retreat coming up in September, and it's been on the calendar since the beginning of the year. We generally start in the late afternoon on a Friday and go into the evening and then have, you know, about a little more than a half-day session on Saturday. I know there are some scheduling conflicts that people have, but let's not get caught up on that right now. I'd like to have you all give me some sense of what kinds of topics you'd like us to cover in the retreat, because I'll need to design the agenda with the Superintendent, and would like to make sure that we're including things that people feel are important for us to be addressing. And so, any thoughts?
Teacher retention.
Teacher retention.
Yeah, that should be number one, right?
Teacher retention. Also, I would add recruitment, recruitment of teachers too, to that. Any other topics? Murphy, did you have your hand up?
Well, we, we owe it to the Superintendent to do an evaluation. One of the problems that we had historically with this retreat is that we tend to overstuff it with topics, and we never really fully cover things that, so let's try not to load it up with too many things. But I think the Superintendent's evaluation is a necessary topic. It's something we need to do.
I would just say that the intention is to do the evaluation in September. I don't know whether we'll be able to do it during the, during the retreat, because we may be missing some members during the bulk of the retreat. So...
Then at least we should get the background material.
We'd have to, we'd have to schedule, we may have to schedule a separate session for that.
The other topic, of course, is, it is unlikely that whatever the Board of Finance does with our budget, that it'll get up to the proposal that we had last March. And we need to be clear about what the budget is going to be. We'll have a number for the referendum on the 24th. And whatever it is, it'll, we need to make sure that we cover what's going to be different between that number and what we had last March.
So you're saying a budget-working session perhaps is part of that retreat?
At some point, yes.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I'm just taking all ideas. So, any other ideas? Everybody's very quiet this evening. Okay, I am going to go back through all my notes from the board meetings in the past year. And I often write at each board meeting, I'll write down, you know, a topic that came up, and I will go through those, see if there are topics that weren't mentioned today. And I'm going to send it out to all of you, and you all can indicate to me if any of those items on the list that board members have raised previously are things that you'd like to spend a little time on. But do people concur with the comment that was made by Murphy about not making it so packed that we don't have time to really discuss things?
Absolutely.
I do agree with her.
Me too.
Yeah, if we have to defer things like this Superintendent's evaluation and put them in a separate meeting, we should.
Okay, okay. Okay, so when I send you out, when I send out that list, I hope you'll all get back to me. Or maybe what I can do is just have it ready for the August 14th meeting, and we can look at it there. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda are action items. And I would entertain a motion. The first item is approval of the purchase of the American Reading Company materials for Grade Four. And I believe the dollar amount for that is $147,500.
143.
143,350. Okay, I'm sorry.
Move to purchase the American Reading Company materials for Grade Four.
Motion's been made by Murphy, seconded by Jaime. Now, we're open for discussion. Yes, Mary?
Yeah, I have been wanting to address the problem of the adoption of the American Reading Program books. So I will take a little time here. I want to say, people often use the cliche when they speak about raising children, "It takes a village." When it comes to education, the cliche is true. It is a community effort, which in Connecticut is also a constitutional obligation. Wyndham has its unique challenges, but it is no different from any other community in requiring that the whole village guarantee that our children receive a free public education. And that's why there are clear statutes about how school districts are funded and governed, including how textbooks are purchased. The Superintendent has asked the Wyndham Board of Ed to sanction a large-scale purchase of textbooks after the fact. It troubles me that the request involves the Board of Education in a decision-making process that contravenes the guidelines laid out in state statute. If we agree to the Superintendent's recommendation, we risk belittling our oath of office. The purchase of the particular reading program, and it's professional...
Has left the conference. You are currently the only person in this conference.
Development schedule...
Go ahead.
...may or may not be warranted. But that's not the issue at hand. The real... The real issue is the process by which the decision was made to acquire the program. It isn't burdensome to present a new reading curriculum in a public meeting with one week's notice, so that the interested citizens can attend, and so that the board can review the relevant material. It is apparent that a good number of people in Wyndham lack confidence in the administration of Wyndham Public Schools. There is a general perception that budgeting is inefficient, careless, and far from transparent. This perception is often inaccurate. On the other hand, it is true that our budgets are not as clear as they ought to be. In this regard-
Has entered the conference.
It would be a grave mistake to ratify the superintendent's unfortunate decision to purchase costly textbooks without first receiving the permission of two-thirds of the Board of Ed, as she is required to do by law. We don't know what was cut last year to make way for the first large purchase from the American Reading Company. I would like to see the breakdown, the books, the bins, the consumables, PD licenses. How does the PD price go in terms of the numbers of teachers and staff participating? How do these costs compare to other programs? Are all grade levels being treated equally? We have been made to view the purchase as a dire emergency. We don't know what might be cut for the rest of Wyndham's children. Once the town's budget process is finalized, we might find out that we must lay off teachers. Would we really choose to lay off teachers rather than postpone the purchase of textbooks? Especially when it seems that we are only considering the academic needs of one grade, or one grade at a time? What is at stake in buying books as opposed to doing something else with the money? As a Board of Education, we may not have a better answer to this question than what the superintendent is offering, but at least we need to have the conversation, so we understand the implications of our vote, one way or another. We were elected or appointed to represent all the children of Wyndham Public Schools. What else could we, or should we, be doing with that money? We don't even have a clear idea of what the money is being used for. I would like more information, more time, and a more transparent process.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else who would like to say anything during discussion? Mark?
I have to agree with many of Mary's points. I feel that quite often we are asked to make these decisions recently without the background. I'm concerned as well, though I've spoken with various members of the public and have become torn on the subject as whether to support this as a one-time expense, or make, draw the line in the sand now and say, "No, we're not gonna spend this money, though we've already certainly committed to this program on a system-wide basis." So, I'm really concerned. My major concern is that we don't have a budget now. We're facing uncharted waters with our last year's budget. We don't have a budget. We do, by state law, operate under last year's money, and I understand this $143,000's in last year's budget. But if we're gonna do something like this, then I need to see that we have some agreement that we're gonna have freezes at perhaps the cabinet level. We have a cabinet person who moved from cabinet to the North Wyndham, to the Wyndham Middle School, and that salary alone probably would cover the expense of this purchase. So, I would be looking for some sort of freeze, at least at the cabinet level, until we get another, approved budget. I'm willing to go with the budget, this expense, against my better judgment, I guess I will, or against agreeing with Mary, only because I feel that it'll be harmful to the students that are looking forward to the program. Perhaps that's something else we should have added to the retreat, is a review of our programs, so that we have a better understanding of what's coming down the pike. This can't have been an emergency. We've been using this program for a number of years. We knew about the program. It wasn't, even last year's purchase couldn't have been an emergency. It wasn't like we weren't aware this was coming. We could have had a more robust discussion about this.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't know if I feel justified in holding the kids hostage, because the adults didn't play nice in the sandbox. So, that's my concern about this, but I would certainly have a strong emphasis that we not spend any more money, or at least not replace any cabinet positions, until we find out what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Are there other board members who would like to speak?
I made the motion, so can I speak to the motion?
Murphy? Yes, you may.
I don't disagree with Mary's point that we should have approved a reading program a year ago, at least a year ago. We didn't, and that's both our fault and the superintendent's fault. Meanwhile, we have the program in K to three. It's working well. We have students going from the third grade to the fourth grade who are expecting to remain in the program. I believe it's in the best benefit of those fourth graders to continue in this program. Like Mark, I was concerned about the budget implication. There is, we are currently using the 18, 19 spending level until the budget passes. What's in the 18, 19 budget is more than enough to cover this expenditure. One of the reasons that I wanted to put the budget into the retreat is that this is one of many priority questions we're gonna have to address at the retreat. It's not just as simple as, could we have traded the books off against the teacher somewhere?
Or central officers.
Yeah, the current level of reduction, I think, is somewhere around three-quarters of a million dollars, and from where we were last March to where the Board of Finance is now. We did get some increase in funding from the state, but it's in alliance funding, which has all sorts of strings attached to it. We can cover some of the things that we had planned on in our budget with that additional alliance money, but not everything. We need to look at what we can do and what we can't do, and what we have to decide based on what we've got in terms of grant resources, as well as general fund resources. So, we have some serious work to do and some serious discussions to undertake about what our priorities are, and what we're trying to do, and it's, but I think that even in that context, we're gonna wanna stay with this program. So, that's why I made the motion and why I support the purchase.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mary?
Well, I just want to say, if we are weighing priorities, I mean, or should be, we can't. I mean, we're just being given this to approve. As for the last year's level of budget, well, we now have 3% increases in teacher salaries and things like that, so if we're operating at those levels, but, yeah, I just don't see why this is a preferential object in the budget. There are many needs in all grade levels. In the next, the calculus books, I do think are different, but in the sense of it's $4,000, according to the ECE Math website at the University of Connecticut, when you have a textbook, it can be used for five years, even if it goes out of print in the time that it's being used, they consider it valid for the next five years. And it's for one classroom. This is a whole curricular change that occurred outside of the board's input. That is part of the issue. Also, I have an issue with one grade being insulated, if we would use that term, from the budget cuts.
I just have to say, I differ with your characterization, Mary, that the, that we're insulating the fourth grade, and I also differ with the thought that we are giving the fourth grade preferential treatment. Those weren't necessarily words that you said, Mary. I'm just saying that as a general comment. And I take seriously the questions that you have raised, Mary, and also Mark. And I've had one-on-one conversations with everybody on the board about this issue. I think this was a very tough decision for people, a decision that was not taken lightly, and people are gonna vote the way they're gonna vote tonight. But I think that the superintendent and the board need to be on notice, that we can't continue to do business this way. We're doing it this one time. I mean, I'm gonna vote for it this one time, because I believe it's in the best interests of the students and the teachers. I've had extensive conversations with teachers about this program. So, I'll just stop. I shouldn't talk too much. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? Yes, Mike?
I agree with what Mary was saying, also hear what Mark's saying. And it seems like, I'm gonna do it again. I'm going to say, I'll do, I'll vote one time for this, but it seems like we're saying this over and over again. And we really need to address the issues here. You know, we can't hold hostage the kids. I understand that, but there are other needs, and I'm really hoping that, you know, in conversations that, you know, we've had, that other cuts are not gonna be made. Because I'd hate to see, you know, major, major big cuts happening to other classroom areas. This just, this just cannot keep happening. We've gotta make changes, and them changes have to be made real fast.
Yes, yes.
Real fast.
Yep. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll call a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor? I'm gonna vote. Opposed? Motion carries, and I want to thank everybody on the board for the very thoughtful approach to this tough decision. And I want to thank the teachers and the two principals who showed up today, and the other people in the public who spoke to us about this program. On one side or the other, I think it really caused us all to really think hard, and thank you very much. And we have one more action item about the approval of the Board of Education purchase of textbooks for the new calculus course at Wyndham High School. Entertain a motion?
Move that we spend, that we purchase 20 textbooks for the ECE calculus course for the 11th and 12th graders at $199 a textbook.
Second. Motion made by Murphy, seconded by Suzie. Is there any discussion of the motion?
I just would like to say, hooray. It's, this is a course that's long overdue. It is, calculus is important for students that want to go to some of the best universities in the country. It is possible to get in without it, but it's a lot easier to get in if you had calculus in high school. I hope that we can encourage a lot more than 16 of our students to take this course. I know calculus is challenging, but algebra is challenging, right? Once you get into it, it's not as hard as it seemed from the outside. At least that was my experience when I was exposed to calculus. My first reaction was, "I don't get this at all." And then in a little while, I got some help from a teacher, and it's, eventually it made sense, and eventually, it wasn't really that long. It's, it's a really great thing that Wyndham High School's gonna be offering this course.
Speak for yourself about understanding calculus, Murphy. Is there any other comment on this motion?
Of course, you would, you would understand that right away.
All those in favor of the motion on the floor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Last item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak during public comment? Yes. Oh, well, two of you. Hello, how are you? Make sure you identify yourself for the folks listening.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Kristen DeGray. I live in Willimantic. I have a daughter at Barrows, and actually, my son will be starting at E.O. Smith in August. I'm also a math tutor at North Wyndham School. You had asked for ideas about getting the public to buy in with the budget. The budget is something that I have spent a lot of time with. I'm not a finance person, but I'm a smart person, and it is very, very difficult to understand. There have been many iterations of it. I've been at finance and audit meetings with papers handing out, handed out, showing us, you know, $400,000 in cuts, and this is what we can do to cover it, and $300,000, this is what we can do. But there's never been an adjustment of the actual budget book. There's also discussion about moving positions to grants. I think, although it will be a lot of work, you need to revise that budget book. You need to show real numbers. You need to show what's coming out of grants. You need to show what is being cut. You know, it's been said that cuts won't be made to the classrooms, but so far, we've had coaches cut, para and tutor hours are being cut. Apparently, I'm a tutor, and that's what I'm hearing. We haven't received our salary agreements yet. There are cuts being made to the classroom. It might not be directly to a certified classroom teacher, but there are things that will impact our students. So, you need to be transparent. I think the more people know, the less they will be able to go on Facebook and lie about what's happening with this budget. We need to understand it. We need to see where the money's going, and it needs to be real. The other thing that I wanted to mention, I'm not a reading person, but because I work in the school, I do know this. ARC is a wonderful program. I can walk into a kindergarten classroom and see 25-year-olds silent, just immersed in their books, and enjoying it thoroughly. And it's amazing to see. Now that you've approved fourth grade, that still leaves fifth grade without it. So, for instance, that's two classrooms in my school out of 24 classrooms that will be on a different reading program. So, I don't know how much it would be to add fifth grade, but to me, you can't do one without the other. I think it's really important. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Oh, great. Come on up.
Hey, it's working okay. Even everybody. My name is Rodney Alexander. I'm the first vice president for the Wyndham-Willimantic branch of the NAACP, and my first time here tonight, so it's been very interesting for me. A couple of things to piggyback on what the lady just said. I think the idea for a community forum is awesome, but it should be in layman's terms, so everybody can understand it.
Okay.
Because some budget reports I've seen throughout my many years, bunch of stats, and nobody understands what's up. So, transparency, again, is huge. I also like the idea of the ARC program that I heard about tonight, and I think is important that it continues. And also, we have to figure out a way to reach Wyndham County, which is killing us with this budget. Willimantic voted for it. I know I was out there. Our branch will continue to do whatever we can to help with voting and to get this budget passed. Some issues I heard tonight about protocols and stuff, I think that needs to be addressed, too. So, everybody's not having their back against the wall, and looking forward to work with this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned at 8:10.
Record setting.
Meeting adjourned.
Good evening, though.
Did everybody on the board side sign this? Mike, did you sign this?
Oh, okay. I had a question.